Called the Board of Alderman meeting to order for the City of Warrenton on March 4, 2014. Would everyone stand and face a flag and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, in the District of Delaware, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
On the agenda, I want to scratch item 15B. The Board asked to have more time to discuss this in more detail, so we're taking that off the agenda for tonight's meeting. First item on the agenda is the minutes from the Board meeting minutes from February 10, 2014.
Motion for approval of the minutes from the meeting of February 10, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Kestrelly, to approve the Board meeting minutes from February 10, 2014. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item 3B, work session minutes from February 18, 2014, regarding comp time discussion.
Motion to approve the work session minutes from February 18, 2014, regarding comp time discussion.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dreyer, to approve the work session minutes from February 18, 2014, regarding comp time discussion. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item 3C, regular board meeting minutes from February 18, 2014.
Make a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from February 18, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kestrelly, seconded by Alderman Ock, to approve the regular board meeting minutes from February 18, 2014. Roll call.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item 3D, executive session minutes from February 18, 2014.
Motion for approval of executive session minutes from February 18, 2014.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark, to approve the executive session minutes from February 18, 2014. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item four, hearing from the public. We always extend an invitation at this time that anyone that would like to address the Board, come forward, state your name, your purpose of business, and we ask that you limit your remarks to five minutes or less. So is there anyone that would like to address the Board? No one wants to talk to us. Not hearing from anyone, we'll extend that scene to the Board of Alderman, if anybody from the Board has any comments you'd like to make. Let me start with Alderman Clark.
Yes, if anybody has any streets or anything repairs like that in the City of Warrenton that need to be redone, we need to know about them now for our budget year. If you would contact us, we'll try to fill it in.
Alderman Ock?
Nothing.
Alderman Kestrelly?
No.
Alderman Cornell?
Nothing.
Alderman Flake?
No.
Alderman Dreyer?
No.
Go ahead. We're going to move on, and I'm going to be fast tonight because the Mayor really has nothing to report, so we're going to get right on into our business. First item of business we have is on item eight, is Agapi Ministries' request to renew service contract and letter of support, and I think Mrs. Carleen Williams is here to address the Board. Would you like to come forward, so we can all hear you and get you on recording?
Good evening. Okay, I'm Carleen Williams. I am the interim Director at Agapi Ministry of Warren County, and I come before you this evening to ask if you would please consider our request to renew the service contract between Agapi Ministry of Warren County and the City of Warrenton. As you may know, Agapi Ministry is a food pantry and a charity that serves residents of Warren County, and we have three locations. Our Warrenton Food Pantry is at 713 Powell Street here in Warrenton, and our Wright City Food Pantry is at 70 Bell Road in Wright City, and our third location is The Thrift Shop at 1039 Armory Road in Warrenton. Our business offices and our social service functions are located at the Powell Street location. Agapi Ministry offers programs to prevent hunger, promote human dignity, fight homelessness, encourage wellness, and empower economic self-sufficiency. All the clients of Agapi Ministry are certified as far as their income, their residence, their household members, expenses, and other sources of public support. So they all have to come in, be counseled, and we certify them according to their certifications or their (laugh) all the above, what I just, their income, their residence, their household members, their expenses, and their other sources of support. We're requesting $14,000 for the fiscal year of 2014, the same amount received that we had received in 2012 and 2013. This is to help provide homeless prevention services to the city of residents that come in and need help. I prepared a report for you, and I've included in this report figures which show the amount of services rendered to the city residents. The figures are from our fiscal year 2013, which is the last year that we have the 12 months of data in. I've also brought a copy of our most recent audit, and I'd also would like to take this opportunity to express our appreciation for the City of Warrenton and all the continued support that we've had throughout the years. So on behalf of myself and my staff and the volunteers and the Board, we are very grateful and sincerely thank you for your support. I'd also like to take this opportunity to ask you to please consider the letter of support, and I think that you may have a copy of that, that is needed for our Economic Self-Sufficiency Program, which we call it CWEB. It's also known as our Community Workforce Enhancement Program, and this is a grant that we're working on right now. It also was, it's also called the Neighborhood Assistance Program, and that's to help some of our clients when they're interested in going to college, and we help them with daycare assistance and things like that, so.
Do you have time to answer any questions the Board might have?
I do.
Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Williams?
I do not.
My question is, your budget, what type of operating budget, you know, what's your annual operating budget, and where does that money come from besides from the City of Warrenton?
Okay, from donations. We do apply for grants and try to get a lot of help through grants, but mostly we really work with churches and the community and individuals that donate, and so...
So you're not receiving any state funds or federal funds?
No.
Unless it's in the form of a grant?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
I think that the Board is very sympathetic that it's a necessary program. We think you do a lot of good for the county and the City of Warrenton, and it's sad that we have people in those predicaments.
Yeah.
But we still are responsible for helping to take care of them.
Yes.
So...
Neighbors helping neighbors.
Anything else for Mrs. Williams? I would entertain some form of motion, whether you want to participate in that, same as we did last year?
In terms of the budget, I mean, if you want a recommendation to put in the budget, I'd make that recommendation or a suggestion. I don't know if we didn't really vote on this at this time.
You would approve it at the time you approved the budget.
Budget, okay. So I certainly think we would want to include that in the budget as we go through the process.
So really no action to be taken at this time?
What about the Mayor's? What about the Mayor's letter? And I think you're asking us to authorize the letter that was in our package.
Of support.
Yeah, and basically what this is, is it's a state tax credit letter. Our organization does a lot of this, and whenever you put an application in, you're required to get support from government entities, all sorts of different people, and this simply is a letter that would go in with the application to support that.
Yes, sir.
So I'd have no problem with the Mayor signing of that letter and sending it. You need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
To approve the Mayor's letter on behalf of Agapi Ministry in support of their NAP program.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Cornell, to approve the letter of support from the Mayor in regards to Agapi Ministry of Warrenton. Could I have a roll call vote on that, please?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kestrelly?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Now, I've got another machine working here. What's the problem? Next item on the agenda is item nine, insurance broker services bid. And I might take a few minutes to give, make sure that the entire Board's aware of what all has gone on and how we got to this point. Also want to share this information with the public. This came about as a result of the auditors being camped out in our chambers for six or seven months and looking at every piece of paper and every document and every receipt and expense that we had for the last five years, and one of the issues they were hung up on was our bidding process for benefit managements in regards to health insurance for our employees. They termed it that we had a flawed system in selecting a company or brokers to represent the city, and they made several issues there. One issue was they thought maybe the bid we took wasn't necessarily, in reality, the cheapest bid, maybe the bid we took wasn't really the best bid. And as most of you know, health insurance gets to be a very complicated matter. The compliance issues change yearly, and it gets more and more difficult to keep tabs on this stuff. So one of their recommendations was that we needed a scoring system in selecting a health insurance carrier or a brokerage carrier. Another recommendation they had was, instead of taking health insurance bids, that we hire a broker or a brokerage firm to represent the city in helping us to design a plan and walk us through the bidding process and let that broker solicit bids for the City of Warrenton. So that's the route we took. We decided that we would advertise for brokerage companies to send us their request for qualifications, and we advertised that, and we had five companies that responded and sent us their qualifications as to why they should be the broker for the City of Warrenton. Upon receiving those requests, we formed an ad hoc committee, and I'll tell you, the members of that committee was Alderman Kestrelly, Alderman Ock, myself, Terry Thorne, Director of Operations, Brandy Walters, the Human Resource Person. Our job was to read those requests for qualifications and score them from 0 to 100, rate them. Took me quite a long time to do that. I'm a slow reader. I probably have five or six hours of reading those requests for qualifications, scoring them all. Probably some of the other ad hoc members might have done it a little faster. At the end of the scoring, all the requests for qualifications, the committee took the top two scoring companies and invited them in for an interview. We allowed each one of those companies one hour, 30 minutes, to present their qualifications as to why they should be our broker, and then allowed the ad hoc committee 30 minutes to ask questions and so forth. So at the end of two hours of interviewing the committees, I think the committee kind of came together and made a decision as who should represent the city in the form of a brokerage service. I think I've asked Terry to prepare a little summary. Would you want to go over that with the Board at this time?
I can, if you'd like.
I would.
What I did was put together, based upon the two brokerage companies that were interviewed, the similarities of the companies, and then what some of the differences are. Both are very large firms, both have very experienced staff in dealing with employee health insurance benefits. Both firms have teams that are dedicated to public entities. Both firms offer a lot of online manuals, human resources articles, and a lot of training materials and training opportunities. Both firms have access to the full marketplace of carriers, so they're not tied to any individual companies. Both firms have paperless ability to complete employee health questionnaires. Both firms offer support services in regard to regulatory compliance, including the changes recently in healthcare reform. Both firms offer ability to utilize standard commissions that are embedded in the rates or a fee-based consulting service, as long as the individual carriers allow the separation of those commissions. And both firms provide surveys regularly to employees, and they prepare benefit statements at enrollment time that spells out what the cost of the benefit and all the different changes are. The differences of the firms, which I felt like were some of the things that were most important in making a selection, the Terrell Company has a specific rule that says their response time is a half day on any given question. The representatives from Gallagher really could not delineate for us a specific timeline, maybe 24 to 48 hours, but they would provide us a contact list, so if we couldn't reach the specified individual, we could continue calling others on the list in the hopes of reaching someone else. They both have a lot of support staff available, benefits attorneys, human resource specialists. The Terrell Company has all their support staff in their Chesterfield office, while the Gallagher support staff, much of it is located at a corporate office in Itasca, Illinois, so Terrell is much more local with the additional support. Both firms have wellness consultant programs. Terrell's consultant is available to come to the city, meet with staff, meet with employees, and assist in establishing some type of wellness program. The Gallagher consultant is located, again, in their corporate office in Itasca, Illinois, and their availability is really to create some customized flyers and then have the regular representatives come out and meet with staff and employees to kind of determine what the program is, but really not onsite service by this qualified wellness professional. Terrell has Cobra Administration and Flexible Spending Account Administration available at their office through their own staff, while the Gallagher Company utilizes a third-party administration company for both Flexible Spending Accounts and Cobra. We talked in detail after the end of week, the ad hoc committee, at the end of those interviews, and of the two who were interviewed, it was unanimous that the Terrell Company would be the best option of the two.
Any questions or concerns from the Board? I might since Alderman Ock and Alderman Kestrelly served on that ad hoc committee, do you all have any input or comments you would like to make?
Yeah, I think we've seen a lot of changes in the marketplace with the Affordable Care Act and the changes in wellness altogether, and I know when I looked at the different companies, one thing that I was primarily focused on was what are they going to provide in terms of wellness services? What are they going to provide in terms of legal help in kind of fearing our way through some of the changes in the Healthcare Reform Act? And I think both of these companies brought that to the table, and I know where I worked, we used Terrell for six years and found them to be an excellent company, very responsive, very informative, and did a great job in wellness. And so I think that in some ways, as we grow as a city, that feature is really critical. But I also think it's really critical for staff to take advantage of these things. If we want to bring in a firm like this, we want to look at wellness, and I think we have to be serious about talking about wellness within our staff. We have to have staff that's willing to do the trainings, you know, from Brandy and Terry, making sure they're better educated and get the support, because I think it can be a tremendous learning potential, but it's something we have to do. And I think we talked to the staff about that that night, that these are all great features, and you need to be aware of that. Everybody had the same commission rate. Commission rate was the same across the board, but there were some added benefits that I know it's been helpful to us as an organization, and I work for an organization that has about 100 full-time employees. We grew from about the city size over the last three years to 100 full-time employees on healthcare, and these type of firms really have done a great job in doing a better job of providing health coverage and wellness for individuals. And so, you know, from my perspective, I think it was a good direction to go from what we have been doing and to take advantage of some of the things that are going on in the marketplace. But I think it's important that the staff take advantage of those situations. So the other thing that I think typically comes up, and we didn't talk about this in the committee, but some of the things that typically come up when you switch brokers is how the fees impacted between brokers, and sometimes when a broker takes over, they immediately start getting the commissions off of the premiums that were earned by the prior broker. And I think my recommendation, I think Karen was supportive, that the current firm who has the healthcare would be allowed to retain the commissions through the rest of the premium year, and then the new firm would be able to take those commissions at that time, because that represents, you know, their work, it doesn't represent the new firm's work. So I think that has to be part of what Terrell agrees to as part of this. Do you agree with that?
Yes. And that's wording, Terry, that's particularly listed in when you assign a broker.
Right. So I think that's critical we do that, because it's not fair to do it any other way. So, you know, so I mean, my recommendation is that we would go with the bid of J.R. Terrell for the firm to hand, J.W. Terrell, thank you. I always screw up the names, but like they pointed out to me, when you use them, you can call them whatever they want to, but when they sell their product, they have to tell you the right name. So my recommendation, we would go with Terrell for our brokerage for this coming year.
Do you have any comments?
The big differences I felt between Gallagher and Terrell, the two that we interviewed, I really felt, knowing both of these organizations extremely well, I felt that Arthur J. Gallagher really is an organization that specializes in much larger cities than Warrenton. And so to me, that was the secondary choice over Terrell.
Any questions from the Board? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Make a motion that we would accept the proposal from J.W. Terrell for the insurance issue.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Kestrelly, to approve the insurance broker services bid to J.W. Terrell. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
I would, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Motion carried six to zero.
I would like to make the comment that I think we do have some major refining to do in this process. I think we learned a lot through the ranking process and things that we need to address the next time we go through this process.
And I would certainly second that. I think whenever you start a system, you look for ways you can improve it, and I think there's some areas that we've talked about that we could definitely improve in how that process works the next time.
Okay, I'm ready on item 10, approval for destruction of records. Who's addressing that?
I can.
You're doing that?
Yes.
Okay.
In front of you is the list of records to be destroyed. This wasn't done last year because of the state audit, having the auditors, and we didn't do any destruction, and storage is getting kind of tight, so bring to the records retention that we can, these are the records that we can destroy.
And how are you destroying them?
They'll be shredded.
Shredded, okay. Do we shred them here, or we are a company to come and shred them?
Company comes onsite and shreds.
Okay, okay.
I just have one question. When we get down to the payroll records, it's my understanding that there's different requirements for pension stuff than there is for normal payroll, and that we've been told the retention on pension in theory should be forever, but I don't know if pension records are in here or it's simply the payroll records themselves.
Gabrielle? I'll have to look at that. I don't know specifically what is included in the payroll records. Those are normally the pay-through, it's an AP check, so I can check that and make sure we pull those out.
Yeah, that would be the only thing. I mean, I think we can destroy payroll records, but there is some little different requirements as it relates to retirement plan stuff, and I don't know. If this is just normal payroll, it's probably okay, as long as we got some historical backup on the pension, because obviously somebody can go back a number of years on pension issues if they have questions. So I just want to make sure that's not part of this included in clarification, so. But I have no problem going ahead and destroying that that's here if it doesn't include that.
So Mel, you're asking approval from the Board to proceed with destroying these records?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dreyer, for the approval for destruction of records as presented. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item 11, Grounds and Maintenance Director Brad Bozicrew.
Good morning, Board and Mayor. I guess what we're looking for tonight is moving the mowing of the right-ofways from the Public Works Department to the Grounds and Maintenance Department. So I just need Terrell's approval to do that.
You know, it seems to me like a logical move since you're already overseeing the parks and the other mowing within the city, that why that wouldn't...
We thought it would make it a lot simpler to do it, and it frees up personnel, the guys department, and then the pool with it, so.
So does this mean you'll also be mowing, like, water tower areas, there's grass under the water towers?
We do that now.
Okay.
The only thing we haven't been doing is 47 road ditches and what have you, so that's...
You guys, you don't mow the sewer plant, do you?
We just mow the treatment plant.
This finishes all?
We cut everything, yeah, this is the last little piece of it here.
This is just from one pocket to the next. From there to...
Yes, yeah, the next one will be the next part of that.
So do you need a motion?
Yes.
And I assume the Director of Operations is concurrent with this?
Yes, it will make efficiencies in use of both staff and equipment.
Okay, I would make a motion that we would authorize the switching of the mowing of the right-ofway grass to the Maintenance Department from the Water and Sewer Department.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark, to approve the mowing of right-ofway. We move to the Grounds and Maintenance Department from the Public Works Department. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Next would be the budget amendment for the additional staff for that, and I think you have a thing in front of you what that would be.
So once again, these are just hours that we were spending here, but now we're going to spend here.
Yes.
No.
Well, no, we are, yeah, we're...
There was a staff person in Public Works that part of their full-time duties were to pull off the Public Works staff and mow the right-ofways. This is the addition of hours for a person who will be a seasonal person, not part of the regular full-time staff, that will be brought in just to mow the right-ofways, so that when guys staff in Public Works is trying to put in streets or, you know, that kind of thing in the middle of the summer, they're not losing one of their staff people to go mow the right-ofway. So it is an addition of $4,000 to the budget.
So if Guy says he needs another staff person, we're going to remind him that he lost?
Yes.
He gave up half the position.
And actually, he's gaining hours because he'll be able to keep his full-time staff person rather than have them pull off and go ride the mower. person, rather than have them pull off and go ride the mower.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to approve the cost for seasonal right-ofway mowing. Is this a fixed number, or is that a...
We're pretty confident that that's going to be a good number.
Okay.
We went out and visited the right-ofways and with our, with my staff and the addition of the tractor and stuff. I think we did it for this.
I get the whole concept, and I'm not in disagreement with the concept, but is the money there?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so in that motion, the total wages for 25 weeks would be the $4,036.88. Is that fair, Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Put that in there. Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Next I have is the grass seed bid tabs, and I would recommend going with MFA in Truesdale for the amount of $5,360.
Is this grass for the ball fields, or what's the grass seed for?
Ball fields, City Hall, any other places that we need, mostly all the parks, Binkley, Dyer Park.
Does this come with fertilizer and stuff to go with it, or is that going to come later?
No, this is just, K-31 Fescue has been working very well for us without having to put fertilizer with it.
So this is where you're going to save somebody to pay for that part-time guy?
Exactly.
Right. There you go. Then we're going to turn around and cut it, so.
And then cut it. So he overspent four, the guy, now he saved three. So he's a net, that's a problem of $1,000. Which is better than Guy.
Is 8,000 pounds about what you use?
That's usually what we do in a year, yes.
A year's time?
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments from the board? We need a motion to approve the grass seed bid.
Anybody down there active today? Want to make a motion, Fred?
I'll make a motion that we approve the grass seed bid from MFA in Truesdale for 8,000 pounds of grass seed for $5,360.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the grass seed bid for 8,000 pounds of premium quality K-31 from MFA in Truesdale at a total cost of $5,360. Roll call, please.
Alder Person Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Anything else?
That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Director of Operations, Terry Thorne. I was looking at that tree Arbor Day, and I was thinking that might be Brad's topic.
It actually is about Brad.
Is it? Okay.
We have received notice that Brad has been awarded the Missouri Arbor Day Arbor Award of Excellence. So I think Brad is to be congratulated for that, for his efforts in taking care of the trees in our community. So congratulations. Brad?
Thank you, Brad.
Congratulations.
Oh, sure. Everybody wants to be the second person that gets to go to lunch with you. Did you notice that?
Actually, Michelle and Brad are going to the awards luncheon on March the 11th.
Good for you guys.
Thank you, Brad.
Great job. Thank you.
My next item for you is the results of the tourism commission meeting on February 25th. The commission met and considered two requests from the city of Warrington. One for holiday bows for the downtown light poles, the other for the fireworks. Their recommendation was to approve only the fireworks. Was a lot of discussion about whether or not the holiday bows and lights and those sorts of things really contributed to tourism. I think some felt that it was important for downtown to be well-presented for the hometown Christmas, but ultimately, it was not, it did not come forward as a recommendation. So the recommendation from them is to approve the 10,000 for fireworks, which will leave the remainder of the downtown bows unbudgeted that need to be replaced.
Do you need a motion to approve that expenditure?
Yes.
Any questions?
So, is like, this, the fireworks, 10,000, everybody else is contributing?
Correct.
So the fire, the Fair Board is not giving anything?
No.
And we're not soliciting money from businesses to support it?
No. Everybody gets a buck.
How much bank for your buck do you get for that?
Literally.
You get $10,000 worth of bank.
A lot of sparklers.
A lot of sparklers.
I agree with your comments. I'm just listening.
I have no problem doing the 953 dollars for the lights for the, because I think it makes the city look good, whether it brings the tourists or not. Just makes the whole community look better due to the lights. I have no issue with that.
I was present during the meeting where the fireworks were discussed. I believe that the, Mr. Micus from the Fair Board was present at one of our meetings along with Mr. Scholl Harvey to explain the rationale or their thought process behind this. And their thought process was that there is a value to having the fireworks in the city of Warrington, that it does meet the goals of the tourism fund, and that there is no other way of reaching this goal and providing fireworks. I'm not a fireworks guy, I've stated that before. That being said, I recognize that other people are fireworks people. I certainly hear when the city of Warrington does not have fireworks, or actually, the Fair Board does not have fireworks, the city of Warrington still gets the rap. Absolutely. And again, part of this is the city of Warrington has, we have appointed members to this tourism commission to consider all of these recommendations, all of these requests and make recommendations to the board. And while I don't believe that they should go without oversight and without question occasionally, I believe that there should be some latitude given to them. And in this case, I believe that they made a very educated decision, and this is what they came up with, and they're, I believe unanimously recommending this expenditure. So I would make the motion to approve both of those expenditures. One, the fireworks in the amount of $10,000, and the bows in the amount of $953.
They didn't recommend it.
No, I'm sorry, they didn't.
They didn't approve the bows.
What was the man in the picture about, they didn't approve the bows and decorations?
You know what? I do not recall that. Terry, do you recall what the...
There was a lot of discussion, and it revolved around whether or not decorations bring tourists to the city. There were some who felt fairly strongly that, you know, it doesn't contribute to that. There were others who said, well, hometown Christmas does bring people here, and without decorations, it certainly is not very Christmasy downtown. So there were, there were members on both sides.
Have we, have we in the past purchased the Christmas lights and items like that out of tourism?
Yes. In fact, everything has been replaced since 2010. All the bows and all the LED lights and the wreaths, this is the last group of bows for the downtown lights that have not been replaced.
Did the tourism have another reasoning on what they might want to do other than put bows up? I mean, was there some other project they were looking at or leaning toward?
No, it wasn't that there was anything to replace it. It was more just the thought process that, you know, how does this bring tourism to the community?
Bring tourism to the city. Okay, understand.
Does the board have the ability to authorize the expenditure without a recommendation by the tourism board?
I think the way the statute and the ordinance reads, I think you have to have a recommendation from them to approve. I think if you're going to approve it, an expenditure for the ribbons would have to come out of general funds, doesn't it?
And I feel pretty confident that that's right. And I also think maybe kind of undermining the tourism board.
And that's why I asked the question, not, that seems to be the obvious answer.
It just seems funny that they've paid for lights and decorations before, all the way up to this time, and now, all of a sudden, it's a major issue.
You have some different members than what you previously had.
So your motion is to authorize the payment of the $10,000 for fireworks?
$10,000 for the fireworks.
You're second on that?
I'll second that.
You will? Okay, second. Alderman Cornell made the motion that we approve the tourism recommendation to spend $10,000 for fireworks. Alderman Dreyer seconded. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
No.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kestrelly?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one. Alderman Ock, you want to comment on that, or...
Yeah, I think so often we spend money under the theory that it helps tourism, but if you do a quick calculation, and in that one event, we generate $300,000 worth of meals, sales, or whatever in the city of Warrington, it'll barely, it'll just barely cover the expenditure. So from a financial standpoint, it doesn't make sense. I mean, does it create goodwill? Probably, but if we're saying this is what we do because it increases revenue in the city through tourism, I don't, I don't think there's $300,000 worth of new expenditures in the city for that two or three hours that that fireworks goes on.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 12C.
Okay. We have in your packet the memorandum of understanding with the fire district for use of their facilities during emergency weather. And we've been talking about this now for the last couple of board meetings, and it has been approved by the fire district. And later on this evening, there is an ordinance where you will approve the mayor signing of it. So it has been completed. I know we actually made use of this just this last weekend with staff staying out there, and I think it's worked out very well. So we owe a big thank you to the fire district for offering this.
Absolutely. And maybe, maybe we should send them a thank you letter or something. Can we do that?
Sure.
I'd be happy to sign her. They did step up, you know, and went beyond what they had to do to, to help us meet our needs, so.
And Chris, did you review this from a legal standpoint?
Yes, I did. We rewrote it and kind of, actually, I think we came up with it and put it together, so I think it works well. And it's a good document moving forward that anybody else can use if they want an arrangement as well.
So we really don't need, we're going to address this in the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions on the memorandum of understanding? Okay, how about master plan, RFQs?
Yes, we have sent out requests for qualifications for the comprehensive master plan for the city. It will include not only the planning and zoning component, but also recreation, master planning, as well as looking at streets and sidewalks planning for the future. So when it is completed, it should be a comprehensive planning document for the city. Those RFQs are back. We received submissions from five companies. And my question for you is how you would like us to proceed. We can, they are very lengthy documents. We can put together a committee of affected staff and make a recommendation. If you'd like for a couple of those to come and interview with the board, or you all can go through those, and however you'd like to do that moving forward.
Well, I'm personally tired of reading those RFQs, so if some board members, other board members would like to volunteer, it would be nice to have a couple of them on a committee.
These make the insurance ones look like peanuts.
I was afraid of that. You can scare them all away.
However you'd like to proceed.
Is that why you make the big dollars, Jerry?
I'm not sure. I'm going to have to have a raise if we're going to do that. Is there any board member that would like to serve on that committee? Or is it the board's pleasure to have staff review those?
I have no specialty in that.
You do?
I have none.
None.
Well, my thought was if we want to have staff do it, that we include those staff who would be involved, so the public works director, the recreation director, probably Brad from the grounds and maintenance perspective, chief from the safety and streets perspective, you know, those folks sort of be directly involved. And then I would say we choose the top two candidates, and then I do believe that the full board needs to interview those candidates and make a decision from there.
I think we can do that. Is that agreeable to the board?
Yeah.
Let's move that direction then.
Okay. And I don't know if we will have that for the next meeting, because like I say, it is a lot of paperwork to read, but we'll get it done as quickly as we can.
I think if our two people say that's fine.
And that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
How about our finance manager, Gabrielle Curry?
Good afternoon. First item is the accounts payable claims report. These are the invoices for January. The total amount is $261,617.94 that I'm requesting approval for.
Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
I'm making a motion to approve the accounts payable list as presented in the amount of $221,759.13.
Is that the right amount?
261.
Hold on, hold on.
261,000.
I didn't scroll far enough down.
Okay.
And the amount is recommended.
That's a good, good one.
That's always a good fault. You just made a motion and said it was done, so.
You mean, so move?
Yeah, so move, yes.
Is there a second on that motion? Seconded by Alderman Dreyer. Motion made by Alderman Ock to pay the accounts payable in the amount of $261,617.94, seconded by Alderman Dreyer. Roll call.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Monthly report.
Yes. We also have the monthly report. Just wanted to mention, the sales tax for January was, we received, revenues were below budget for this month, but then when the February receipts are posted, then we are 5% over budget for the year. So we could end up at the end of June in that range.
Great.
And that's all I have, unless you all have questions.
I was going to have, I have a question for councillor Revell there. I noticed our municipal court revenue is down. Is there an explanation for that? Crime is down, maybe?
You know, I don't know that it's safe to say crime's down, you know, looking at a statistical analysis of the revenue. That can vary from month to month. There's always a jump, there's always a decline after Christmas, and always a jump right after tax return time. So I think that, you know, that's just my own, you know, amateur analysis on it. So I would say we could look at that variation after April and May and see how much it really is down, because it, when the economy's down and then during the holidays, it seems as as though the court is the last people that are paid. So, I would, I would recommend that we look at it after the tax return time, and then really look at what our projection was and what we ended up with for the year.
Just a question. The board have any questions regarding?
Yeah, I do have. On the CD investment listing, it looks like we have a number of things that came due in February. I would assume we just rolled them over to same places?
Actually, we request proposals.
Okay.
And then, those are due this week, and so then, we'll be sending that back out in March.
Okay.
Any other questions for Gabrielle? Is that it?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm ready for Economic Development Director, Michelle Slinter.
Good evening. The first thing I have for you is my update.
Are things looking up?
We are starting to see more movement. Bad for us is we still don't have a lot of large manufacturing facilities, and as you can see, they're wanting, you know, anywhere from 150, 200,000 square foot facilities that have been left vacant, but at least, we're starting to see a lot more movement, which is good.
I mean, that's what it looks to be like, at least. We're getting inquiries now, and, and interest in different things, so.
So, you know, there's one, two, three companies that have been looking for large square footage buildings. As the Greater Warren County Economic Development Corporation had a discussion about the concept of how do you, bringing in buildings prior to the ownership, so that you have something to market as opposed to having a bare ground to market, has that discussion been held, or is it, you're still kind of?
They had talked about that a little bit, but first, just trying to fill the buildings that we have, but it hasn't been brought up in a while.
So, the idea of spec buildings is still off the table, then?
Yeah.
Is it, do we have anything in this area, these requests, in terms of square footage? Are these just way out of our size?
Yes. The largest thing kind of for, for us that's close by is the Warrenton Copper Facility, and that is a very specialized facility.
Right.
I know Wright City does have some, and they have put in some proposals for some of the, not necessarily these, but in the past, because they had a lot that were left when Ameriwood consolidated, so they have some. I know Montgomery County has some, and Montgomery County actually has a, if it's not been filled, they have a food-based facility, which I believe was Tyson's Foods, and they had pulled out, which you have to get USDA approval and FDA approval and all of that. So, there are some in the county possibly, but nothing that we have right in the city of Warrenton, which if it goes in the county, are, you know, people will still go from here to there to work and come back here to shop, so. And I do, if I think, I see something that I know of a building that's not in the city of Warrenton, I will, hey Josh, you know, I know you've seen this, what about this building? Because I don't want to step on, like, if it's in Wright City, Karen Dorondo's toes, or if it's in Truesdale, and I know he works with them all, and say, you know, I know that Truesdale's got this facility that's vacant, this might work, and most times, he's already aware of it, but sometimes, he'll be like, yeah, you know, if he was special, if he was out of town, and he didn't get a chance to see the email.
How many vacant buildings are there in the industrial park in Truesdale?
In the industrial park? I don't believe we have any that are vacant.
In the old section, or the old part of?
The old section, correct.
Really? Well, you do have a lot of ground with no buildings on it.
And there's some ground, there's one parcel that's for sale.
Right.
The rest of it is owned and is not for sale.
Really? Okay.
Is there something going on with the old copper plant? Are they taking that building down, or, I see some demolition going on there.
That I'm not aware of, but I do know that the Greater Warren County EBC has been looking at spurs, and I know that that's like one location that they looked at, at putting a spur back in to utilize maybe as a location to have a rail spur that could be like a rail depot for the community, so that is something that they have looked at.
Mayor, they are removing the equipment from that building.
Oh, okay, that's what that is? Okay, all right. But with no forethought that something else might be going on?
Not that I've heard. All I've heard is that there's a company removing the equipment.
Okay. So, what you're telling us is there's, there's enough vacant structures and buildings for companies around that it would not be who the city of Warrenton to build a spec building at this time?
I'm not going to say that, but I also know that we had a spec building that we had built years ago that took us five to 10 years, I believe it was, to sell.
To get lost.
If I'm not mistaken, the Haze Foods building was a spec building that the city had actually built, and it took several years for that building to be bought. And I know that Wright City has a spec building, one in their industrial park, that has been there for years, that has not been filled at this time either, and I want to say that one's been more than 10 years.
Okay, you answered my question. What else you have, Michelle?
The second item I have for you is just to inform you all, I'm on the Transportation Advisory Committee with Boomsly, which is part of a MoDOT committee that we have, and with the 1% sales tax that MoDOT is looking at, possibly hoping to get on the ballot someday to help fund different projects in the community, they're having a meeting, we have to have a meeting open to the public with TAG, that gives the public a chance to kind of say what projects they think are important in the community, and we're breaking them down by county, and so, Monclink County's was last night, Montgomery's is March 10th, and Warren County's is March 11th, and it's going to start at 6:30, and it's going to be at the County Administration Building, and that's open to the public, anybody that would like to attend. They're going to kind of give you a listing of the different projects we have. If people can't make it, there's also a survey, I believe on Survey Monkey, that the public can take, and I'll put a link on that to our website as well, or talk to Terry about where we want to put that, so that way, we can get the public to, to get that taken.
Okay, good. Any other questions for Michelle from the board? Is that it?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. I'm ready for item 15, Recreation Director, Dottie Phillips.
Good evening. The first item that I have for you is my recreation monthly report, and I'd like to update that for the youth baseball softball number, we're actually at 301, so our numbers are not as far down as what we thought they would be. So, they're actually, with the end of the coach pitch and T-ball registration, they got closer to normal.
Any questions for Dottie on the recreational monthly update report?
I have, have a number of people in the public who are excited about what could be going on this summer in the Farmers Market area, so I think we're moving in the right direction there, that, you know, these are diehard people who are going to the fairground, and stop going to the fairground, and they go to Wright City when it's convenient, but I think they're very interested in, in seeing what we can do there, so I think this is a good move.
Great.
Time will tell.
Yep.
And I think we're moving in the right direction also.
Hope so.
What about your, your part-time seasonal employees?
The list of employees here, there's 23 total. Of the 23, six of them live beyond the borders of Wentzville, I'm sorry, Warrenton. The rest of them are in, in Warrenton. We still have a few positions that we're going to need to fill, specifically umpires and another recreation maintenance person. So, just requesting your approval to hire these individuals with the rates that are listed.
So, you need a motion to approve your list of seasonal employees?
Yes, sir.
Dottie, the ones that are the umpires, the official umpires, it says per game, so they've got a separate rate somewhere?
Yeah, it actually depends on their years of experience, and also, the level of play that they're umpiring at. For instance, our lower levels, U7, U8, and I believe, U9, they get like $15 on the bases, but then, when you get up to the higher levels of baseball and softball, they may make 20 or 25 a game. It's pretty, we're actually, where that is concerned, we actually pay significantly lower than what neighboring communities in the area do for umpires, so definitely, I think that what we are paying them, you know, is reasonable.
And the other rates per payer by hour?
I'm sorry?
The other rates per payer by hour?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept the recreational part-time seasonal employee list.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Jessley, seconded by Alderman Ock to approve the recreational director's hired list of seasonal employees. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. How about youth, youth sports uniform bid?
The uniform bids came back pretty, you know, it was definitely what we wouldn't have expected numbers-wise. They, they fell into place, and our recommendation, or my recommendation is to use Blue Viking out of Wentzville. We did not, unfortunately, have anyone from the city of Warrenton bid on this project. I have had a discussion with at least one of the local companies, and have tried to identify, and then, talk to that person about why they didn't bid, and what we can do to have them bid in the future.
What do we budget for this?
Our budget, well, it depends, it differs with each of the, with each of the different programs. It states it on here, I believe.
Yeah, I don't know, I was just looking for in total, because I assume these bids are in total, you know, between the different activities?
Yeah, they are in total for, it's broke up into the different ones, so baseball, softball, T-ball, then soccer, and then volleyball and basketball. I can...
Okay, then let me ask you my second question. How do we justify spending sixty, you know, 60% more, or almost double for the recommended bid as opposed to going the low bidder? I mean, if I'm reading this right, the company out of Bedford, Ohio, is almost half of what the recommended is, what's the justification for that?
Well, I would say that the number one reason is that we are, the turnaround time, first of all, to get the shirts back, and the fact that we don't just, like, when I order baseball softball, we'll place an initial order, and then, inevitably, we always have to do a second order because of late registrations and things like that. And then, we will also have people who will come, they ordered the wrong size, parents went to order for their kids, stuff like that. So, it's almost like we're, we continue to order the extras, and to get that stuff back, if it's somebody local, I can just run and get the stuff, whereas if, you know, we're having to have it shipped. I mean, even with, even last year with Blue Viking, and then, some of the local companies that we used here, we've never actually had them shipped, we always go get them, or they deliver them, simply because we're usually pushing that deadline to get the stuff on time, because we do have to wait to make sure we don't have as many late registrations we have to add. If we start having to do it, you know, like, one shirt at a time as we get them, our prices increase significantly, because they have to add a setup fee for every time they print those shirts for us. So, this way, I can save it and, you know, order 20 at a time, as opposed to one at a time and having them ship it.
You said you couldn't, either one of the local vendors, that we even took one bid from Hart last, that last meeting, I believe, on some basketball shirts?
Yes.
No reason why they didn't bid on it?
Um, yes, he, he did have a reason that he did not bid on it, and I discussed it with him, and...
And that reason is?
His, his reason was that in the past, when he did these larger orders for the department, the way that the orders were placed, and the number of times he had to reprint and, and do things that it basically was costing, or, I'm sorry, wasn't costing him money, but he wasn't making money on anything. So, he had decided that he just simply wasn't going to bid them anymore. So, I discussed with him how we do our orders now, and that the process has changed as opposed to the way they used to be done, and I do believe that in the future, we'll get a bid from him, now that he knows that it's done differently than what it had been done in the past.
But I know, our local vendors, they, they do all over, all over the state?
Yes, sir, he does, and I, I, they actually did our youth, Hearts actually did our youth basketball shirts, and they turned out great. The delivery of them was great, they were very well packaged, orderly, I didn't have to really do anything except for stick a tag on them to say whose they belong to, just exceptional, really.
I know some of the, some of the complaints I've heard from the local vendors was, has been that they want to be guaranteed, the city want to be guaranteed two or three-year price fix. That wasn't a part of the bid this year?
Uh, no, it was not. And the reason that that was not part of it is, I don't think that's a common thing that the city does anymore. Is that correct, Terry?
Yeah, I'm not aware that we've asked for two or three years of prices.
It was two years last year on that. I seen the bid sheet, and that, that's what was given to me from one of the vendors.
A two-year price guarantee?
Yeah, they wanted a two-year price guarantee.
I was unaware of that.
And that's where, why they did not bid on it one year because of that, because he, they, they said they could not guarantee two years, because they don't know what their cost is going to be.
Understandable.
Right, and, and actually, one of the things on here, you know, we're looking, the dry-fit shirts are kind of more of the thing that everybody's going to now, rather than the cotton T-shirts, and actually, they've become more affordable now than they used to be, because the price of cotton has gone up so much. So, that is something that has changed, so certainly, I don't think we could ask for them to give us a multi-year bid.
Dottie, I, I just have, I mean, this is $10,000 difference between the Bedford, Ohio one and the Blue Viking. I mean, you can do a lot of overnight shipping for that, and I, I just don't understand, unless I'm reading this wrong, I don't understand the logic of, of going with Blue Viking just because we can pick them up and get reorder. Heck, we could order extras of each, of each one and have them shipped here for less than $10,000.
That's your table, too, if you get better bids.
I mean, I, it, it doesn't make sense to me, I just... Is my math right?
The Bedford, Ohio one appears to me to be $7,000 on dry-fit, right? 7884?
Correct.
And Blue Viking is 13,471.
And then, the cotton is 6819.
And the, yes.
And we're talking about buying both, or one or the other?
One or the other.
Okay, because see, it looks to me like we're buying some dry-fit, some cotton.
Actually, the recommendation was to buy dry-fit for softball, baseball, T-ball, and soccer.
Okay.
Those are the outdoor sports.
Okay, and so, so it is cotton and dry-fit, so it's a total of $14,703 for Bedford, Ohio, and if I man the other two together, and this is all manually, no calculator, so give me a break, $24,053 for the Wentzville bid, which is, so I mean, it's, you know, almost $10,000 difference. I, I just don't understand why we would do that.
I don't either, I mean, you know, I purchased, purchased tons of stuff, you know, from out of state, gets shipped in in a timely manner, and even if you have to drive to Wentzville, by the time you pay a staff person, you know, the half hour to go down, pick it up, and the time to go back, you know, and the loss of productivity just traveling, that's going to add to your costs anyway, so I, I just, I'd have a hard time not going with a low bid, I really would.
Well, the other thing, too, just, the, actually, when we were doing the evaluation of the sports bids, a couple of things that the Rydell and Koppel were both disqualified, Rydell, because they did not provide any samples. And then, and then the second thing was just simply, in, in trying to keep business somewhere local, we started out, are they in Warrenton, are they in Warren County, are they in the state of Missouri? That was the second thing that we did. So, I mean, you know, frankly, it, you know, we don't have any, I mean, we've never seen anything from this company in Ohio. We have the sample of, of what the shirts will look, you know, the quality of the shirts, but as far as what their printing looks like, what their art capability is, we have no clue.
But you could call up, you know, get a reference?
Yes, we can.
And find out from some other city or places, right, to see if the quality's there.
Was submission of a sample part of the bid?
Yes, it was a bid requirement. Yes, it was a bid requirement.
I mean, to me, with these price differences, staying local is out of the question, isn't it? Is the, you know, if you're talking two or $300 or $500 to stay local in Wentzville and the state of Missouri, I'd say, yeah, I'm right with you. But, but these differences, I just, that's off the table as far as I'm concerned.
But what about the?
And I think.
And I agree with you, but my concern is that if they didn't meet the, the bid specifications.
Well, but I would assume they did because she has them on the list.
My understanding was if the bid specs weren't.
Rydel, Rydel did not, Rydel did not.
Okay.
Meet the bid specifications.
And what about Koppel? Did they supply a sample?
Koppel did. It was Rydel, Global Products International and Allen Sportswear that did not meet the specifications.
So we have things on here that met and didn't meet. But the bottom line is the low bid met the specifications.
I would, yeah, that's, that was correct.
I want to make a motion that we buy our shirts for the youth sport uniform from Koppel Advertising from Bedford, Ohio with the low bid of fourteen thousand seven oh three.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kessley, seconded by Alderman Ock to accept the low bid from Koppel Advertising from Bedford, Ohio in the amount of fourteen thousand seven oh three. Discussion.
Yes, it, only caution I have with this, because we bought from vendors before without being able to, because like Dottie says, we do have to go back and get it redone. We've had, tried this in the past and it hasn't worked very well. So just keep that in mind with this. What Dottie says about having someone somewhat local is very, very good because if you have to wait a week or two to get this product, it, it makes a, makes a big difference. The season's half over all of a sudden.
Yeah, but you don't have to wait a week or two to get anything nowadays. You got a FedEx truck in front of your house in the next day or two.
If they have the product ready to go.
If they have the product. And I agree with that, but that's the case in both of these, you know.
So.
So I think it's important if we go with the low bid and accept it, that Dottie makes the phone calls to make sure that she doesn't get a bad recommendation when people are using them. If she does, she needs to come back to the board and say, you know, they were cheaper, but here's the reason why.
My, the other comment that I would have, and maybe this is, is, you know, part of the recommend, why I made the recommendation I did, I do have some concerns. We, we've, we've gone out on a limb with the youth baseball and going to a new program or a new league. You know, not having history on this, on this company, on any of these companies actually is, I think, risky considering that we're trying to rebuild some of these programs. And while it may seem like something really little, you know, big deal, it's a T-shirt, we can get it overnight. If these shirts come back and they're not, you know, the quality of them is, is not what we're expecting, um, you know, I, I'm not sure.
I call the question, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion on the floor, the second, to accept the low bid from Koppel Advertising Bedford, Ohio in the amount of fourteen thousand seven oh three. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
No.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Was your vote yes?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one with no abstentions. Portable toilet bid.
I hope this discussion doesn't go as long as that.
Um, portable toilets, the recommendation is to accept the low bid from O'Fallon Sewer.
So moved.
Second.
What was, what was the motion? I'm working on my machine.
To accept the low bid from O'Fallon Sewer Service, one thousand thirty-five dollars.
Motion by Alderman Castley, seconded by Alderman Ock to accept the low bid on portable toilets from O'Fallon Sewer Company in the amount of one thousand thirty-five dollars. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Pool management. What's wrong with my machine?
Recommendation is to accept the only bid from Midwest Pool Management. This is the company we've used in the past.
What is their pri, what is their bid compared to prior years? Is it about the same?
It, it is comparable, however, the, the total number is less simply because we've decreased the pool hours.
But their fee is the same.
The fee is comparable.
Fee's the same, so.
Fee's the same. Make a motion, we accept a bid from Midwest Pool Management for operating swimming pool for next year.
Second.
Second on that. Second by, or, motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark to accept the bid from Midwest Pool Management. Do we have an amount there?
Seventy-six thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars.
Seventy-six thousand two hundred and thirty what?
Thirty-six dollars.
Your maximum bill.
Okay.
That's a max.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Okay, sorry, chief, there's no money left. Should've went earlier.
That's right. Anything else, Dottie?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. We're ready for the police department. Chief Hottishell, good evening.
Good evening, mayor and board. First thing I have this evening is a request for approval to purchase a 2014 Ford utility police interceptor. The state bid was let to Lou Fuse out of Chesterfield and that is the number that you have in front of you, twenty-nine thousand four forty-seven.
Under budget.
Well, under budget, but there's additional parts that come with that.
He hasn't put the equipment.
Of course.
Get you in item number two.
Of course.
Do we currently have an all-wheel interceptor?
We don't. This is the first one. We talked about this at budget time about trying one of these out.
How much higher is it than just a regular car?
It's about $3,000 more.
And I'm gonna.
All toll.
I, I'm gonna.
Close gas.
Renew my objections that I had at the budget meeting. We, we have had a, a remarkable year with snowfall this year and we've managed to make our calls. I, I just don't see the, the need or the purpose. In, in a city our size with all, nearly all paved roads, we have, we have survived to this point. I just don't, I don't believe we can justify the additional upfront cost plus the additional maintenance and lower fuel economy.
Could you have used it this past weekend?
Not, not this past weekend, no, but there was a significant snow that we had earlier in the season.
What did you have to?
Break out the building departments, four-wheel drive vehicles to get around town. So it, yeah, it would, it would come in handy probably, you know, once or twice a year for, for the snow, so we can get around.
Would this be a car that's in the pool or a vehicle that's in the pool but wouldn't be scheduled for normal rotation?
It would, it would be a regularly rotated vehicle. It would be a sergeant's vehicle.
This is an unusual winter and, and my wife and I would always had a luxury of having at least one four-wheel drive vehicle. And we would have probably been stranded a couple of times, not even able to get out of our driveway or something without a four-wheel drive vehicle. So I, I, I can look at it both ways and see there's probably are going to be a need at times. Can we justify it on the cost and, and the fuel, a lesser fuel economy? I, yeah, that I don't know.
And, you know, the fuel economy piece is something that I, I'll keep a close eye on. I recently talked to the sheriff about his experience and he uses one himself, basically back, back and forth to work. And all of the sergeants have them over there. And it depends on who's driving the vehicle. You know, he, he had numbers arranged everywhere from about 12 miles to the gallon to 17 miles to the gallon. So, you know, obviously that's something that depends on.
Depends on who's operating.
Chief, I always see a lot of cars parked down there in the parking lot. Is this something that somebody has to drive home or can we leave this based?
Nobody takes vehicles home.
They don't?
No, detectives and administration are the only vehicles that go.
Okay, okay.
Could be code enforcements.
Yeah. I just always see them and I just didn't, I don't like the idea of this thing going personal home.
Oh, no, it would not.
I, I get complaints from time to time, why do we have so many cars? It looks like we have a whole fleet there, but there's reasons why they're there at different times and, you know, sometimes it's a shift change and everybody's there, so it all varies. I, I need a motion on the purchase of the 2014 police vehicle bid.
So move.
Second. Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer to accept the bid from Lou Fuse, Chesterfield, Missouri for a 2014 all-wheel drive police vehicle bid in the amount of twenty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one. You've already stated your reason, so we're gonna move on.
Thank you. And then item number two there is the additional equipment and installation with the moving a light bar, radio and radar unit over from the vehicle and be taken out of service as well as installing a console in the new vehicle. And my recommendation is to go with the low bidder of Ed Roy's Safety Products out of St. Louis.
And my calculations are you are still about six plus grand under budget.
But I will be bringing you a video unit to purchase later, somewhere in the neighborhood at three grand, but we'll still be under budget.
You're like a teenager. I'll make the motion to approve him. Did you have a count?
No, I was just gonna say, but we, we put equipment in other cars.
Yes.
Adding equipment onto this is no different.
Yeah, and what we've done in the past, we've actually been really lucky working with Don Brown in the past because it's been a turnkey situation. They, they do all the ordering of pieces and parts for us and they just lump it all into one bottom line figure and that's what we've been able to deal with in the past. So this has been a little bit different for me trying to piece a bid together, but, you know, it's gonna work out fine.
Make the motion that we purchase the additional equipment for the police interceptor from Ed Roy's, Roy, 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 Safety Products, easy for me to say, for two thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars and ten cents.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kessley, seconded by Alderman Ock that we accept the bid for equipment for the 2014 all-wheel drive vehicle in the amount of two thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars and ten cents. And who was that from?
Ed Roy's Safety Products.
Ed Roy's Safety Products. Very good. Roll call.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Thank you. The last thing I have to discuss with you is approval, sort of blanket approval for Guy and myself to place neighborhood log signs. Basically what's going on is the program really kind of got a jump start. The folks up in Wall and Hollow are very interested in the program and have already met once. Their signs are being ordered and it occurred to me that, you know, if we come to you every time a neighborhood wants to come online to place signs, you know, that might be able to come to some, it doesn't bother me, but, you know, if, if we could just have blanket approval to place those signs as we get a new neighborhood log program online, that would be.
I'd like to know though when you do because you know this is a hot button.
And I think that's, you know, that's part of our ongoing effort to make sure that you guys are aware of what we're doing with regard to the plan. And certainly that would be part of that, is letting, letting you all know when we have a, a new neighborhood coming online.
Do we need a motion for that?
Does anybody object to that?
No.
I, I think you, we're just gonna give you verbal approval on that to, to go forward, but.
Very good. Thank you.
Fair?
That's all I have.
Awesome.
Thank you, chief. I'm down to resolutions. Resolutions number three oh two. And I, and I, I need a clarification on what this resolution is. Can somebody explain that to me?
If I can, mayor. This is a resolution that allows us to develop a public safety plan in basically terrorism types of incidents or incidents that potentially endanger individuals' public safety here on city properties here at City Hall. So, I mean, everybody obviously is aware of the Kirkwood attacks and what occurred with regard to that. So the chief of police has been working on putting not just a program together to educate the board and the mayor of what to do in these critical incidents, but also, you know, putting a, you know, basically a protocol together to teach you guys about it. This is a situation, obviously, that as we put something together with the sunshine laws of where they are, they are protected documents and protected procedures and protocols so that as we put it together, we don't defeat ourselves by then making them public records. So what, in working with the chief and what Terry is, you know, essentially is we're asking you to pass this resolution, giving written approval to closing this, these documents, closing these protocols, closing these procedures, so then we can then, you know, have an executive session where we can discuss what would happen if there is a Kirkwood type situation or a critical incident involving, you know, the board or involving a meeting or city property or city staff.
So you just need a board approval?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I could read the resolution if you want, mayor. It's a resolution closing all documents, operational guidelines, policies and response plans related to public safety and public health during critical incidents that endanger individual or public safety or health. And that's straight out of the statute.
Okay. Do we take a motion?
What assurance does the public have that what is being closed isn't stuff that shouldn't be closed? In other words, in the development of these documents, that somebody doesn't overstep the boundaries and protect something that's in the public interest, not that protected?
Well, I think, I think that's a great question. Obviously, we've dealt with a lot of sunshine over the last two years with the city and what our response would be, obviously, Alderman Ock, you guys are the trustees of that information. You guys are the people responsible to be in charge of kind of, you know, not necessarily policing, but, but making sure what we're doing in executive session is the responsible thing. In addition to that, I would obviously advise you if we're outside the boundaries, if we've kind of had a new board come in and, and really worked as a board, we've, you know, and advising it, we've kind of stayed, I think, really well within those boundaries. If there was a situation in which one board member felt that some of these documents or some of these plans that were being developed, you know, were inappropriate to have an executive session, obviously the ordinance allows for you guys to vote to approve making the documents public. This isn't the recommendation of the chief of police. It's not specific to any incident. It's more general to critical incidents, you know, not specific to any type of, you know, developing intelligence. I guess Alderman Ock would be some of the concern or something like that. But that's not what the plan is put together and, you know, I think when we review it, you know, part of it is to give you some information, you know, from a public safety standpoint, but it also get feedback to say, what do you guys want to see in this and, you know, kind of make it a, you know, more of an approach that's collaborative.
Does that help you? I, I need a motion to approve that resolution.
Make a motion to approve resolution three oh two?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Kessley to approve resolution three oh two. We have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. What else you got, chief? Is that it? Okay, I'm ready for item eighteen, bill number seventeen dash fourteen.
Motion. Go. Call for the first reading of bill number seventeen dash fourteen. Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Ock for first reading of bill number seventeen dash fourteen.
In ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding between the city of Warrenton, Missouri and Warrenton Fire Protection District.
Call for a second final reading and passage of bill number seventeen dash fourteen.
Second. Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer for second and final reading and passage of bill number seventeen dash fourteen.
In ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding between the city of Warrenton, Missouri and Warrenton Fire Protection District.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Kessely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Bill number eighteen dash fourteen.
Call for the first reading of bill number eighteen dash fourteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dryer for first reading of bill number eighteen dash fourteen.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign the state revolving loan fund application for the wastewater treatment plan and sewer collection system improvements.